Hey everybody, it's Stephanie Courtney with the Learning Project Network Podcast. Okay, listen, today is going to be so fun. It's going to be so amazing because we have a lot of great people that are going to be coming in, speaking with us today. If you've been watching my podcast for some time now, you know, we love that coffee shop feel, keeping things organic and real. You know, we want to be able to give people questions and think about what they want to say, but we want that organicness. We want that part where we can say, come in, let's talk, let the people hear you on such a real level. And today, y'all, we have one of the people that I love and admire. I just love everything that she's doing. City Councilwoman Betty Wilkerson, welcome to the Learning Project Network.
Stephanie, thank you so much. I'm excited to be here. Boy, podcasts is a generational thing, but I'm excited to see where our conversation takes us today.
Oh, my goodness, yes. And I've been, I really wanted to put this conversation together because one, you know, a lot of people are voting right now. Please, if you don't have your ballots, make sure you go get one. If you've already voted, good job. If you forgot to vote, next time, make sure you stay informed, follow the people that you need to know about. But one of the people I think that we need to know about is you. Can you tell us a little bit about who are you and how the heck did you get to Spokane, Washington?
That's a heck, but I first have to say, please vote. That is your power to drive directions of how you want your city to be. So vote, if not this election, please do it in the general in November. How did I get to Spokane? So my mom brought me here in 1963 from Mississippi. I was just a toddler. She had four kids. She was looking for a better life. She was a black haired dresser. She had a friend that was here that had a beauty shop and we came on the train. So imagine a single woman with four kids coming across the country in 1963.
How old were you?
I was six. And so to me, that's always been powerful because think of the boldness and the braveness and probably some fear, even today, a single woman traveling with children.
Yes, yes.
What, we've heard stories and so that we got here, we are, we were blessed. We were just blessed, got here, went to school, Lincoln Elementary, which is now closed, Edison, which is now closed. So there's not a theme here. Libby Junior High, which is still open as an emerging school and then graduated from Lewis and Carter. You know, Spokane is such an interesting city and it's, it's the same, but it's different.
Yes.
So when I was in high school, we had race issues, but it felt different. There was at least a level of respect in high school. So we could disagree. We would hang out in our groups, but it wasn't this open adversarial contentious name calling, brow beating, whatever, whatever, whatever.
Very different than when you left probably Mississippi.
Yes.
Spokane, let me just tell you, real quick fact, if you guys have not read this book by Dwayne Mack, African, African Americans in Spokane, they talk a lot about black people coming from down south to the Pacific Northwest and it's just different. Racism definitely looks different. We know it's here, but it's different. And what you're talking about is exactly what people feel.
Exactly. Our old friend Sandy called it Spokane nights. We just, we just kind of want to get along. But getting here in this elected position, honestly, for people of faith, it was by design. It wasn't on my bucket list. A little poor girl from Mississippi who came up here, who we run food stamps and social services. I never thought I'd be sitting here. So let's talk about the power of opportunity. So when we become engaged, Stephanie, and we have a commitment to make our community better, it's not how we see ourselves all the time. It's how other people see us. And people say, Betsy, you're a good leader. And I go, you know, Betsy, you should be doing this. But I finally accepted that, you know what? I can learn and contribute to my community to make it a better place. And by saying yes, the power of yes, people say yes.
Yes, y'all.
The power of yes can really change your personal life and it could change other people's lives around you. So once I really understood that and started saying yes to opportunities and learning about my community and I look back and it's like, all the work I had been doing had been like a resume to get me where I'm at now in political office.
Let me tell you, that story resonates with me in so many levels. My mom was a single mom and you know, sometimes when people look at kids that are coming from that space, they never hear about the strength and the resiliency that comes out of that. You know, sometimes we can get very much stuck into the situation. As a teenager, what was like something that you did that you were like, oh, I'm a leader. Like I can actually do something and maybe it wasn't a teenager, or maybe it was during college. What was that moment for you that began to introduce the idea of you being a leader later in on in life and at that point?
At that point, well, a lot of it came through the church. So you don't get to be a leader in church. You become a leader because that, that's a given. My biggest point of success was my daughter had joined Girl Scouts. And of course, they're always raising money and they say, Betsy, would you help raise money? And so I came up with this little idea for a raffle. I had some giveaway stuff, you know, gift cards. And we raised over $350 at a Girl Scout meeting. And afterwards, they said, Betsy, that's the most money that's ever been raised in one of these events. Of course, would you please join our board? Yeah, so, so really, I never had thought of myself that way till people kept saying, good job, good job, good job, you should try this, you should try that. Then I started joining some organizations and you know, finding your place where you belong.
Yes.
And when I joined Stephanie, it wasn't like I thought I was that. I was actually joining to learn. Cause some things you just can't get out of a classroom.
Yes.
Or the college.
Yes.
You have to be boots on the ground with the people doing the work. So I joined several social organizations, some that people didn't think I should have been there because they were predominantly white. But you know what? That exposed me to a whole nother world outside of my black community. Places I didn't think I would go to fundraising events that were addressed to homes that were in the more affluent parts of town. I remember the first time I rode in a BMW. It's like, isn't it silly for me now to think about that? But those were huge leaps.
Absolutely.
For me back then, coming from a middle, low to middle income black family. But I have to resonate once more with your mom, because I know your mom and single parents. You know what? We did not want our children to become statistics. Because single black mothers were raising these kids that we know weren't going to be anything. It's like, no, I am not raising a child that's going to be on public assistance their entire life. And so that was a commitment I made to my children, as your mom did, where we were willing to put our stuff on hold to make sure our kids succeeded. And truly, when my kids got out of college, then that's when my life really started to pick up because I had accomplished that goal to launch them. And now I had this time to do more in the community. So being a woman in leadership is difficult, especially in Spokane.
Yeah.
It is a very male dominated environment. We call it old school. I think sometimes like, you know, we're in the 21st century and women can lead. And it just layers on that I'm a black woman. There is, I believe, a perception of fear of black women, even more so than black men. Because black women show up ready.
Yeah.
To engage, they're prepared. You know, we don't walk in threatening, we just walk in and sit down at the table.
Yes.
But that being said, they try to minimize your comments and your contributions to you. I'll give you an example, in my space as an elected, many have a challenge of actually calling me Councilwoman Wilkerson. They just like to call me Betsy. So it's that power structure of recognition going forward. It's challenging because I'm the only one.
Yeah.
So the supports that many other women have are not there available to me, but not on the level of understanding that the color of my skin makes a difference. And that the color of my skin changes conversations. And the color of my skin can change outcomes.
Yeah.
My seatmate says, Betsy, I understood being a woman. She goes, but I never really understood the challenges you go through as a black woman. Now the opportunities, it's like walking in and opening the door for other women of color and women period.
Yes.
And young girls, just opening the door.
Yes.
Because on some levels, we're all the same. But again, as a woman of color, it goes up a notch. And that we don't have that group, but there is a ground swell, a ground swell of black women that are raising up in Spokane.
Yes.
That I am so ready to pass the baton to and make way for others. And representation matters. And that young black girls, reason I didn't see myself in politics, I had never seen anybody black in politics. Why would I think about that? That's like a family, generational families, like kids who become pilots. It's because their parent was a pilot.
Yes.
Or a nurse or a lawyer. So it's, it's that type of thinking that we have to kind of move the needle on.
Yes. You said something that's so paramount to the work that the Learning Project does, which we do a lot of work with youth. We have the SEP teams. We started peer support and mentoring groups. So we have about six kids in the, in the community right now that are directly connected to organizations that we connect to, but they have been dedicated to us really tearing down the, the focuses around tokenism, you know, isolation, being the only one. We've got to come together as a community and be like, how do we actually have the right setups and spaces where kids can engage and grow up in? But when you said that all, there's a group of us that are growing together and moving together. It's very intentional and it's very hard too, because you have to realize like, you're going to have to challenge yourself. You're going to have to think about what you need to heal from. You're going to have to think about what behaviors do you have are destructive or are they progressive? There is a lot of reflexive practices that we have to have as individuals. The number one thing that we say in each one of our organizations is healing first.
Yes.
If you're not coming from a healing place, you cannot do work in a peer space. You will start tearing people down. You will start destroying people's self-esteem, mental health. And then the thing that you're trying to do, you're going to be doing the opposite. You become a part of the problem.
The very opposite.
And so the reason why I wanted you to talk a little bit about your experience as a female leader, as a black leader, those intersectionalities are extremely important for people to understand and think about specifically when they're in spaces where they're making decisions for communities.
Absolutely. So I just have to speak to that. So it's like, absolutely, the additional weight of a black woman. And we don't all think alike, y'all. We all have different opinions.
Yes.
And we are human and we bring our own trauma and all that baggage sometimes to the spaces we're in. But when you're representing a whole community, Stephanie, the additional weight is I'm representing a whole community. And so I truly understand my behaviors could be impactful on the work that others are trying to do. So I just can't show up and go crazy. Because then all black women are crazy.
Yes.
And all young girls, and it perpetuates that fear. Absolutely. I just can't show up looking any old kind of way.
Yes.
Cause then that label or that perception is put on other black people. So it really is a very fine line that we walk of maintaining my own integrity, which is foundational to me. And then trying to represent not only the black community, but now I represent all of Spokane.
Wow.
And so my travels and my leadership takes me to Atlanta and DC and Tacoma and Seattle. And when I'm in those spaces, I'm not only a black woman, I am the councilwoman from Spokane and I am the drum major for my city. So how I carry myself is extremely important, but it's an additional weight.
Wow. Uh, you know, the weight that a city council person or anybody in politics carries, right? We talked a little bit about this and you said something really interesting. You said, we've got to get to a point where we humanize politicians. I think that is a very interesting statement because there's some people that are like, listen, some politicians are here for their own agenda. They want to bring up their people. They want to bring up their money. They want to bring up their businesses and they're absolutely correct. There's this other side that people don't talk enough about, which is humanizing people that are trying to make big dreams, decisions for a whole community. Can you tell me a little bit about that statement and what does it mean to you?
As an elected, you have to be visionary. Because yes, we know, my analogy is I want to redo my house, but I gotta fix the roof first, right? I'm not gonna go and put in this fabulous bathroom and paint my kitchen and the roof is leaking. But I still have to dream about how do I build a house and make it bitter for everybody to come in? Now, humanizing politicians like y'all, I have to go home and do my laundry too. Okay? And go to the grocery store and I want to spend time with my grandchildren and my family.
Yes.
But it's a 24/7 gig.
Yes.
24/7. I walked in the Safeway looking like somebody shouldn't be in Safeway. And somebody came up, I'm just trying to buy eggs and milk, and somebody engaged me for 20 minutes on a issue in the city. So really, your time is not your own. You belong to the community.
Yeah.
And that's something you have to accept, that part of your private life. I was at, my grandchildren turned 14, had a big birthday dinner at one of the nicer restaurants and we're just yucking it up and people just feel they can just come and interrupt. Cause you belong, they feel you belong to them.
Yes.
At any time. And that's a yin and a yang kind of thing going forward. But the weight is we have to do it 24/7, 365.
Wow. Oh, that, I hope that perspective gives people something to think about. Because we're literally watching you grow as an individual. We're learning you, learning, or watching you learn about the community and making shifts and your perspectives and ideas.
Yes.
And you are on the clock 24 hours a day. And so that is something that, when you said that to me, I was like, wow, you know, that is a space that I hope that we can learn more about and have more discussions about. Because there are a lot of people in politics, we're not seeing just a bad politician. Sometimes there really are bad politicians, don't get me wrong. Make sure you know that. But there are just some people that are really unhealed. And we're actually seeing them lead with their trauma.
Yes.
Not lead with healing in the community centered at it. They are leading a hundred percent with their trauma.
And fear.
And fear.
And fear.
Fear, it can be such a, a hard place to move out of because it's the unknown. And speaking of the unknown, you are doing something that has never been done before and we want to hear about it. Tell us what you're running for and why are you doing this? This is, listen, this is a part of podcasts that I hope you're still hanging on to because this is what we're here for. Why are you doing this and what position are you running for?
Thank you, Stephanie. So I'm running for city council president of Spokane. That position is elected citywide. So we have three districts and each district has two representatives. And their focus is to represent that area. But city council is like the CEO of the organization. So this position facilitates the legislative body that's on Monday nights. It helps sets the agenda. If something should happen to the mayor, the city council person steps in. Most people don't know that. And so we're doing legislation, laws, we're doing the budget and we're doing community engagement. Why did I do it? Honestly, it was not on my bucket list. I tell people, I was thinking about retirement. But when our former council president decided he was going to do something different, there was nobody else.
Yeah.
And I have to tell folks, when you're in leadership, there are times you have to step up when that's really not the place you thought you were going to be. But because the work is so important, you cannot, I mean, you just feel compelled to do the work. And so that's where I was at. It's like, there is just too much going on in my city, in my community, to leave it to chance for somebody else to show up and drop all the balls we have in the air. And people want us to continue that work. So my example would be East Central. If I go away, is somebody going to come with the same passion I have for East Central? Is somebody else going to come with the same passion and commitment to nonprofits, to minority owned businesses, to small businesses? Will they carry that forward? Will they be caring about housing and our homeless and unhoused folks? Will they bring that passion?
Yes.
That's what really made me decide to run for this position.
Okay, you said so much, like, listen, anybody who listens to my podcast, you guys know I am loud. I talk a lot. I'm like, yes, snapping all of it. Because I'm into this conversation and it's important to me. But you said something that was really key and very important. You said, who is going to do this work? And some people may ask like, okay, are you the right person for this work? Why do you feel like you're the right person for the job?
I am, I feel I am the right person for the job because of my commitment to the work.
Yeah.
So again, I was going to retire. There is nothing in this work for me. There is no personal gain. I'm not climbing any corporate ladder, ladder. I'm not building a resume. You know, I don't want to go to Olympia DC. I want to work right here in Spokane. So my ground roots work in organizations in many spaces. Whether it's from a nonprofit world, working with social services, my small business, working with mental health, my ability to have worked in the court system, to have worked with women, helping women find, to have been in an organization called the Junior League, which is a phenomenal group, to have volunteered and worked in housing, to have volunteered and worked in healthcare. I mean, all the challenges Spokane has right now, I have firsthand experience of that work. And even more important, I have the relationships to make a difference and get it done.
I love it. I love it. I want to talk about lived experience and how that navigates your work. We were just laughing, y'all, because literally every event that I've been at, a city councilwoman has been there. And we were like, do we have the same schedule? Yup, we apparently do. But you're out in the community a lot and why is it important for you to listen to lived experience? Listen to those real voices that are in the community? We literally just were talking about this in another group where I basically was saying, you know what? People need to show up to things that they are not connected to. A lot of people will not go to different events because they say the word black. How can you make a decision for people in a community that you have never even seen, seen before? Or you like something on their Facebook and you think that counts? It doesn't. You need to show up every day. I go to different spaces and I am literally the only black woman there.
Yes.
You can do the same. It is okay for you to be the only white person in space or the only person that is in space with a group of people, period, to learn and hear about their experiences. So how does lived experience really navigate your work and help you make the decisions you need to make?
Stephanie, that is probably one of the most important things that I do. Lived experience matters because it gives you a different perspective of the laws and how they will impact people. When I first ran for my seat as a councilwoman, people keep saying, politicians only show up when they're running. And my commitment was, no, I will show up whether I'm running or not.
Yes.
So it's important for me to be out among the people. In addition, that's where I get my energy from.
Yeah.
It's, you know, it's to be where people expect me to be, where I want to be, where I need to be. So I can be in a room of people of color and their issues and their perceptions of a law is totally different than someone else's. Because of what's happened to them and they think, why are you trying to solve a problem with a hammer? When you could just put a piece of tape over it. And sometimes we feel that excessive, but I'm in this other space and they're saying, Betsy, this is what's happened to me or to us. And their fear is very real to them.
Yes.
And I have to be able to listen to both sides, usually more than two sides, multiple sides of an issue and make the best decision that I know how for the entire community. So I just can't be an elected for the black community or the business community or the dominant culture community. I have to represent the entire city. And every voice is important. And that includes our teenagers and young people.
Say it again for the people in the back. Oh, my goodness.
Young people got challenges as well.
Yes.
And if we don't listen to them, we're not going to be growing our city in a way where they want to actually stay here.
Yes.
And become a part of this community.
Okay, can we just talk about that for a second? Like that literally just took me out of my skin. We talk about all the time, like, you know, we need this, we need that. We literally live in a college town and people are like, as soon as I graduate, I'm getting out of here. I was one of them. I had no intention of staying here at all. And one of the big reasons why was because I did not see a good quality of life as a young person here in the community. I didn't want to have kids right away. I didn't have like a long-term boyfriend at the time. I was like, I want to be able to date. I want to be able to get out. I want to be able to do things. And some people are like, Stephanie, what do you actually do, anything and everything that needs to be done?
Right.
My, hence why the program is called The Learning Project. We take on tons of projects. We are project junkies. But we want to show people that you can take on these additional projects and to create and to develop and to make something that is a deficit in our community. And that is the beauty. We go to different places and we're like, man, they have this and they have this. They put in the work.
Somebody did the work.
You've got to do the work here and we have to fight for sustainability. We have to help our community understand that this is a long-term thing. This is not a one and done thing. And we need funding to do that.
Yes.
We need support to do that. We need city council people that will fight for that and actually show up to the things that we're doing. And most importantly, we need a community that says we all belong and we all deserve to be here and we all need space. And one is not better than the other or one's not needed more than the other. This is an everyone thing. And I just had to say that.
Well, I'm glad because the average age of a citizen in Spokane is 36 years old.
Wow.
That's the average age and that's a demographic that we're not hearing from.
No.
And I know they're in college and they have young families, but we need you. And yes, it will be a sacrifice. Cause things that are important usually are.
Yeah.
A sacrifice, whether it's your time or your money or your connections. But if you want it, you have to build it for yourself. This expectation that government can do everything and will do everything for you. You know, that's a false narrative. Because really, our job is public safety in streets. Sewer water. So government has made a shift itself into this world of social services and nonprofits and small businesses. That's an organization that we knew we had to pivot, especially after COVID. But we do need people to say, this is what's missing. When we started the Carl Maxey Center, it's like, we decided, this is what's missing.
Yes.
Five people who didn't have a nickel between us to get up and do the work. Same with the Learning Project, same with a lot of other organizations. Somebody stepped up and made the commitment to do the work and lead. And there is no perfect path and we will make mistakes. And y'all, mistakes are part of learning.
Yes.
My brother sent me a little quote. He goes, sis, you didn't lose, you just learned something else.
Can we, that right there, that right there, if we do more work around mindset, helping people to accept mistakes, helping people accept failures and understand that they are not the negative, they are the positive. That, that is a really good quote. I'm really glad that you said that.
Absolutely. And because people have started businesses, we know, you hear rich folks have started and failed a gazillion times before they made it. And no, and before they made it. But we are so afraid if we start and we fail.
Yes.
Then we take all of our toys and go home. It's like, no, go home, regroup, come back and do something else again.
Yes.
Try it again. But culturally, as black people, we'd never been taught that.
Yes, yes.
In dominant culture, you know, In dominant culture, you know, they file bankruptcy, they do all kinds of stuff.
That part, that part. It's true. It, it, and I think, you know, when you go back to that quote, we, we belong, we all belong, right? When we're looking at different groups, we have to understand that not everyone has had the same path. Not everyone has had the same opportunity. Not everyone has had the same chances. So if that is the, if that is true and that is the real deal, then we have to take the time to step up and say, how do we create a community that is really practicing this so that we can have more inventors, creatives and politicians and more healthcare co- uh, community leaders? We need that. Um, and speaking of what we need, we wanna know, how are you doing in this race? Where do you think you're gonna go? And how can we, or those that are watching that are like, I wanna support city councilwoman Betsy Wilkerson on this journey. Um, how can we be um, an extension or even help you learn about something that you need?
Thank you for that. And if you are supporting me, that's a big shout out. Thank you already. Because you don't know how it feeds the soul when I go somewhere and a stranger comes up to me and says, thank you for the work you're doing. It's just, it's so powerful. But people, when you hear that false narrative out there, have the boldness to challenge it. Say, well, what do you mean she doesn't support the police? Why do you think that? And not just for me, but for anybody else. We just can't drink the Kool-Aid. We have to do our own homework if we truly wanna be vested in our community. So go to my website, electbetthewilkerson.com. You can donate, you can get a yard sign. You can show up for rallies, but most importantly, you can vote responsibly. And that is powerful. And get your neighbors to vote. You know, our ballots are, you can mail them in, doesn't even require stamp. Just circle the dots and put it in the mail. So just learn more about me. I'm out there. I am truly about community. I'm about building community and building bridges.
I love it, I love it. And speaking of our last question about building bridges, what's the one last thing you want our listeners and watchers to hear from you that is not only inspirational but empowering?
I want people to know Spokane, I believe, is really on the cusp of something great. We are in a different place. People say all this negativity, but new people are coming to town. Businesses are starting. Spokane is the place to be. And I would like you, whoever you are, to be a part of this journey, to make Spokane all it can be. And a place where we belong, no matter what your demographic or what your age or where you come from or what your sexuality is. We want this community to be rich and vibrant with a place where everybody belongs.
Well, listen, if you don't know, now you know, y'all. I wanna thank you so much for coming by the Learning Project Network. Listen, our podcasts are just getting ramped up. We're going to have a ton of different guests, learning about different things. We care about lived experience. We wanna learn through lived experiences so that we can really make decisions, navigate, connect the way that is best fits us. So without further ado, thank you guys so much. Make sure that you stop by, follow us on Facebook, Instagram. And remember, if you would like to be a guest here on our show, don't forget to email us and get the form so you can fill it out. And we can learn more about you and share your story. Until next time, everybody. Thank you.